You're up.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. It is now 6:00 PM on May 11th. I'll call our town council meeting to order. If we could please take a moment of silence to acknowledge all of those that do and have served, enabling each and every one of us our safety, freedom, and right to vote. Thank you all. In accordance with Mass General Law, tonight's meeting is being audio and video recorded. I would ask if anyone in the audience is recording, and if so, could you please identify yourself?
I don't see anybody.
Thank you. Tonight's meeting is being held virtually through a Zoom webinar, Pursuit of Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 Order Suspending Certain Provisions of Our Open Meeting Law. I was in Town Hall earlier. No one was signed up for public comments. Did that remain the same, Jeannie?
That's right. No one signed up.
Thank you. Council comments? We'll move right into Mary's report if she's ready.
Okay, thank you. Reports brief tonight. As you know, we've been still kind of slogging through the budget process, trying to meet with the Finance Oversight Weekly and answer questions that they might have about certain aspects of the budget. So those meetings continue, and I'm told by the Chair, Jim Broderick, that they're meeting tomorrow and possibly Thursday as well in an effort to come to their conclusions about the draft budget that was submitted and be able to make their recommendations to the full council. So that process is coming to a close. And just tonight, 10 minutes before the meeting started, I got an email from, I'm not sure who sent it actually, but the Senate Ways and Means Committee, the Joint Committee, passed their budget today, which increases school aid, Chapter 70 Student Opportunity Act, and other aspects of education-related expenses significantly, and has essentially adopted what the governor's budget was in terms of local aid. So that's still not a final budget. It's going to be moved now from the Conference Committee to the Senate for a vote, and that will probably be in the third week of May. So, which is pretty soon, I guess. It's next week. So anyway, we're coming up on the finish line for that, let's hope. Planning continues for reopening of Town Hall. I'm in the process of drafting a release, so to speak, for publication on the website, and I guess I'll send it to the reminder. Council on Aging will open on May 17th, the library on June 7th, and other town offices hopefully on June 21st, but maybe June 28th, depending on how these other openings go. You know, it's controversial. You can't please everybody. I got a couple emails today telling me how horrible that decision is, that we should just open everything with no restrictions, and it should have happened last week. And then there are others that are still somewhat timid about the impacts of COVID on a return to normalcy. So we're trying hard to balance those respective concerns and be mindful of the difficulties that this pandemic has caused in all facets of our employees' lives as well as our residents' lives. So I can't ignore the implications that reopening has on 300 employees, most of whom have worked through this admirably. But there are considerations on their personal lives, as well as some practical considerations in the buildings for relocating furniture to ensure six feet of distance while staff is at work. So I hope to be able to publish that notice by the end of the week. The department heads have obviously all been notified. I did appoint Alicia Smith as the interim Director of COA. Alicia is the volunteer director, and she's been working for the Council on Aging for five and a half years. I wanted to give her the opportunity, if she's interested in a management career there, to submit her application. But we also have received at least a half a dozen applications from other qualified candidates, and Joan Iwanicki, whoops, I think I just lost my screen. Joan interviewed a couple more people today. And so we'll be making a decision, hopefully within a month to six weeks, on the final candidates. The other thing that's been occupying an enormous amount of time and attention by my assistant Debbie House is the composition of boards and commissions. Received a second resignation from Recreation this week. Got three library trustee seats to fill. There's a couple of vacancies on various other committees. So as I've said to you many times at these meetings, that's a very heavy lift to get people to commit to serving on these committees. But we're doing our best to enlist that support. Master plan should be done at the end of June. I did send an email, I think, to all of you earlier this week that contained a survey with a series of questions, and I took it. Doesn't take too long to answer it. So I'd ask that you consider doing that, just to add your input to the findings of the consultant on this master plan. Recreation is all excited. The first farmer's market is Friday at Center Field from 2:00 to 7:00. They have about 15 vendors, everything from macrame to pork chops. So they're looking forward to having a big crowd and good weather, hopefully. The Veterans District budget continues to be a problem. We're no resolution there. And our local Veterans Memorial Committee, manned or chaired by Terry Glusko, has decided to waive any celebration of Memorial Day this year that involves a procession to the Rotary and wreath laying. I think that group, the reason given was that they're still somewhat timid about the COVID implications, which I guess is evidence of what I just told you about. Some people want to move forward 90 miles an hour, and some people are not willing to move forward, but for very, very carefully. So trying to respect both of those interests. Westcom Board of Directors met last Friday. We're still trying to work out some radio issues. Two new communities have signed letters of attestation, desirous of joining. That's Southwick and Ware. And once we're situated at the formerly known as Salter College Building, they'll be able to take in both of those communities. But I think Ware may join before Southwick. Whichever one of those communities joins first will be able to operate with us from the Chickaby Public Safety Center. And the second community will have to wait for admission until they move the site. I know Steve in the Finance Office is still working on the bond anticipation note application in an effort to try to get some financing in place to work on our fiscal '20 and '21 capital projects. And the other time investment that I've been making on behalf of the town is continuing negotiations with labor unions, which are ongoing, and not close to resolution yet. But we do have another session on the 19th, and then a couple of other sessions scheduled for June. So that's what's in my report. Since I authored the report, we did have a meeting with a group from Mass Development, which is suggesting that the town should participate in a program. It's a financing program called PACE, which allows businesses which make solar investments to recoup some of their savings by some special financing that is done through banks as well as private capital providers. The interest from the town's point of view is that these loans that are made to the various businesses would become a betterment assessment processed by our Treasurer's Office. So we had a discussion about what does that mean administratively for the town versus the benefit to some of our commercial entities that would like to take advantage of this. And the way the financing is set up, sorry, I keep moving my screen here, and I'm losing my screen. Okay, there. Sorry about that. Anyway, after we discuss it, Steve was on the meeting, as was Diane Bishop and Don Fonte and myself, as well as the entities in East Long Meadow that want the town to participate in it. We'll evaluate those implications, and then if, we'll make a recommendation to the council. The council has to sign off on whether or not the municipality will participate. We also had another meeting with Pioneer Valley Planning Commission on that local rapid recovery sector that we're contemplating for the Northwest Quadrant. That's a technical assistance grant, as I've said before. But we're looking for shovel-ready projects by those businesses up there, and we're looking to create some sidewalk improvements and a potential closure of a couple of hundred feet on certain streets in that area in an effort to stimulate walking traffic and dining district sort of atmosphere. But it's in the very much of infancy stages, so I don't want anybody to think we're anywhere close to conclusion on that. Last evening, I was able to attend a webinar, a Zoom webinar sponsored by the White House, the actual Treasury Department, with Joe Biden's staff on this ARPA financing. And unfortunately, what I took away from that was that our money, which we expected yesterday, is delayed by a week, as is the guidelines that go with that. So there's a lot of talk about the legislation itself, because it's very broad, breathtakingly broad in its terms and scope. But we don't have the cash yet, and we don't have the guidelines that go with it either. So that's still on hold. And this morning, an MGM Casino mitigation meeting took place online, and much of the discussion was about community mitigation funds and grants. Apparently, the Casino Commission is having a hard time dispersing the monies that are dedicated to community grants, because you're supposed to show a nexus between a community problem that's arisen as a result of the casino operation, and communities like East Long Meadow are having a hard time establishing that nexus. We've tried now for the two years that I've been through this grant cycle. So I think they're talking, well, I know they're talking about revising the legislation to loosen up the requirements, because the percentage of gaming revenue that is dedicated to those grant funds is, I think it's 6.5%, so the balances are growing, and they're just growing. They're not being distributed. So the Gaming Commission wants that to change. So that was the goodness, the good news that came from that meeting. So that brings you up to the minute. What's going on out of the Town Manager's Office?
All right. Thanks for the report, Mary.
Welcome.
If we move along to approval of our minutes, I'll entertain a motion to approve our April 22 open session minutes.
I make a motion to approve the April 27, 2021, open session minutes.
Second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? We'll start with our roll call. Marilyn?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Kathy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve our April 22 executive session minutes.
I move to approve the April 27, 2021, executive session minutes.
Second.
Motion to the second on the floor. Any discussion regarding those minutes? We'll start with our voting. Marilyn?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Tom?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
And Don?
Yes.
Thank you all. If we jump ahead, there's nothing under Communications and Correspondence this evening. We don't have any public hearings. Under orders of the day's licensing matters, I want to make a motion to approve a one-day license for the wedding event at St. Paul's.
I move to approve a one-day liquor license for St. Paul the Apostle for a wedding reception on May 30, 2021.
We have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Marilyn?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Kathy?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And Don?
Yes.
Okay. Motion to approve a one-day license back at St. Paul's again for a wedding, and this one will be held on June 11th. I'm not sure if I, well, I'm sure the motion before that stipulated that was for May 30th. So this event is on June 11th.
Yes. I move to approve a one-day liquor license for St. Paul the Apostle for a wedding reception on June 11, 2021.
Second.
Thank you both. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on that event? Ralph?
So I noticed on the application, there's no ending time. It's got 4:00 PM till whenever, yet the previous one stated 11:30. I think because of the neighbors surrounding it, 11:30 would be an appropriate time to end if it goes that long. I mean, that's seven and a half hours for a reception. I just wanted to know what the other counselors thought on that.
Any other, Pat?
I would agree with Ralph that there should be an end time listed there, different to the fact that the church is right in the dead center of a residential community.
Yeah. Okay, Tom?
I believe that we have a, it's not really a noise ordinance pertaining to events, but it has to do with outside music, and I believe it's 10 o'clock. I'm not sure if that would apply here, but maybe that's something we should be considering, if it's not now, in the future.
Okay, Kathy?
I was just going to comment that this applicant has come before us many times for many events in previous years, and is very responsible in how the application is filled out, as well as being willing to comply with all, you know, parameters of the license. And perhaps in his haste, he forgot to put it in, or maybe he didn't. Maybe it was just an oversight. But I would recommend that we approve this with the contingency that Jeannie has an opportunity to reach out and just confirm with Mr. Newnian that the time is 11:30, and some reference to the noise ordinance as well.
I feel the same way. Maybe we can amend the motion right now and add that time in there, and it's in the motion, and then we won't have to revisit it. Does that make sense?
I agree.
Okay.
Mike, I would make a motion to amend the application to include an end time of 11:30 PM.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you, Ralph and Marilyn. Any further discussion? We can start our vote here with Kathy?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. Ralph?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
And Tom?
Yes.
We're all set there. Moving down to our financial matters.
Mike, before we go, so I think that was a motion for the amendment. Now we have to take a vote on the actual application. Am I correct, Pat?
I would say yes.
Technically, you are correct, Ralph.
Thank you. Well, you're pretty good with this.
We will follow through. So our previous motion was to amend the motion. Now we can vote on the actual motion that is on the floor with a second. Everyone comfortable with that?
As amended, yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Tom?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
And Don?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So we'll move down to 9B under Financial Matters and amend the final vote. So I believe we have a motion for for that. So could I have a motion under 9B1 to amend the final vote for the MSBA authority to appropriate the 1.26 million for the purpose of paying estimated costs for the feasibility study, construction, and/or rehabilitation of our high school? Pat?
Aren't we supposed to rescind the prior motion? Or am I on a different?
Yes.
Nope, you're correct, Pat.
I think I'd like to move, or I moved to rescind the motion that was taken on April 27, 2021, amending the final vote for the MSBA for the feasibility study for East Long Meadow.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any further discussion regarding that topic? Okay, and that was from April 27. Hearing and seeing none. Marilyn?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Kathy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
And Pat?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Let me just see. My paperwork's a little out of order here. So we amended that. If we move down to, it looks like 9B2. Is that what everyone else is seeing?
No, it's, so Mike, it's the second part of B1. It's actually the motion now, the new motion.
There you go.
And if you'd like, I'd be more than happy to read it.
That would be great. Thanks, Ralph.
So I move that the town of East Long Meadow appropriate the amount of $1,260,000 for the purpose of paying estimated costs for feasibility study for construction and/or rehabilitation of the East Long Meadow High School, a school serving grades 9 through 12 at 180 Maple Street, East Long Meadow, Mass, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto, and for which the town may be eligible for a grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA, said amount to be expended under the direction of the East Long Meadow High School Building Committee. To meet this appropriation, the town treasurer, with the approval of the town manager, is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 44, or pursuant to any other enabling authority. The town of East Long Meadow acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA, and any cost the town of East Long Meadow incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the town of East Long Meadow, and that the amount of borrowing authorized pursuant to this vote shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the feasibility study agreement that may be executed between the town and the MSBA. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, less any such premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
I'll second that.
Good job.
Thank you both. And just for clarification purposes, there was, under 9B1, that was the second half of remaining on 9B1. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Marilyn?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Tom?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
And Don?
Yes.
Thank you. So now we're going to move down to B2. And if, Don, if you could read the supporting document that goes along with 9B2?
And that's a, I'm talking about a town council order to supplement prior borrowing orders to permit the application of sale premium to pay project costs, which will require a simple majority vote. I move that each prior order of the town council that authorized the borrowing of money to pay cost of capital project is hereby supplemented to provide that in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the general laws, as most recently amended by the Municipal Modernization Act, so-called "the premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes therunder, less any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to pay project costs and the amount authorized to be borrowed. For each such project shall be reduced by the amount of any such premium so applied."
Thanks, Don. So the motion presented by Don and seconded by Tom, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Discussion, Ralph?
This one's for Steve. In the second to the last line, it says that the bonds or notes may be applied to pay project costs. Shouldn't it say "shall be applied"? Because the words "may" interprets it as, hey, you may do it, you may not do it. Counselor, in this case, actually, it should be "may" because you don't have to do it. It makes sense to do it, but the law doesn't say that you have to do it. I don't believe, I haven't read that. He did. So actually, Chapter 44, Section 20 starts, "The proceeds of any sale of bonds or notes shall be used only for the purpose specified in the authorization of the loan provided." Right. But this is for the premium, and what it's doing, the Modernization Act allows us to say, we're going to take this excess premium and reduce the amount we're borrowing to apply it against that. Reality, before that, it used to just sit on the books forever, which is one reason why they pushed it through in the Modernization Act. I'm good, for me personally, either way is fine by me. Well, I'm just curious. So this is the premium, this is what's left after the project's been paid? No, this is the premium when you, I'm sorry, when we sell the bonds, if we get a premium. In the old days, they used to only be able to use it to pay for the cost of issuance. Anything left over would just sit there. Then they somewhat modified it to say, okay, you can use it for some interest. And then when the Modernization Act went through, they revamped the whole thing and said you can use it for the cost to reduce the amount you're actually borrowing. Okay. That make sense? Yeah, I'm thinking of it a little bit differently is all. That's all. And Counselor, like I said, in all honesty, either way is fine, because I think anybody with common sense will say, we're going to use it to reduce the amount we're going to borrow. It just makes sense. But I believe the way it was written, it said "may," just because there is an option. There's nothing that says you have to use it. And we're talking about the premium. We're not talking, okay. Nope, I'm good then. Thank you for the explanation. Okay.
Tom?
Steve, this question is probably also for you. The beginning of that motion states that each prior order of the town council prior, does that mean we're going back to more than last year's capital projects?
No, this is a blanket order. It was recommended by our financial advisor, because sometimes you just miss it. I mean, I don't think there's going to be anything prior to this, but if something fell through the cracks, as we've seen the last couple of meetings.
But if something fell through the cracks, as we've seen the last couple of meetings, it could cover it. We don't have to come bring it back in front of you to have another vote on something that was a year old, for example. And so we're, it's just a way of covering the back ones. Going forward, all this, this language will be in each order.
Okay, thank you. Yep.
Any further discussion? Hearing, seeing none. The motion stands as it was read. Marilyn?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
I mean, yes. Kathy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
And Pat?
Yes.
All right, thank you. There is no all business this evening under new business. There is, we are going to have a discussion on the proposed bylaw outlining all town fees not set by the general law. Ralph, I know you participated and helped with this. Want to open the conversation?
I would love to. So in our charter, Article 2, Section 7, Number C, actions under requiring a bylaw establish all fees which are not set by general law shall require the passage of a bylaw. So we're in the process of going through E-code. I knew this was a light meeting, so I thought this would be a good time to bring this up. What we had talked about in, during the E-code was doing a schedule of fees that will be included in it, which will include all town fees so that any resident can easily see all the different fees. And then because we have to do it by a bylaw, then we could set once a year, once every two years, whatever the council so chooses, to review the schedule, make any updates with recommendations from the department heads. But before we even get to that, we need to know what all the fees are. So it would be my suggestion that we ask Mary to have the department heads create a list of what each department charges in fees over the next few months. I mean, I don't think E-code's going through for a while, but my thought is if we can compile those now, it'll be a lot easier when the time comes to have to write the bylaw. So that's what my discussion points were.
Yep.
Well, taken. Tom?
I would agree with Ralph. I think not knowing and not having all these fees, and I'll use the word fines as well, located in one area where residents could easily find them, as well as business owners, I think it would be very helpful.
Okay. Any any other comments on the subject matter?
So, Mike, does the, does the council need to take a vote to ask Mary to have the department heads do this over the next few months? Or, I mean, what's the procedure? I mean, she, obviously, she knows now what what we're talking about.
I was, I was actually, okay, we'll, we'll take Pat's question first and then I see Kathy's hand up as well. Go ahead, Pat.
Thank you, Mike. I want to just, just clarify whether there is any timeframe here. I don't think the timeframe should try to mesh with the E-code project because the E-code project is now in final form. And any additional additions would delay the project and cost us more money. So I don't think that we're facing a timetable there, but I'm not sure whether Mary would be prepared to do this in the next couple of months or wait till the budget's settled. That's my concern.
Okay, Kathy, I saw your hand up as well.
Yes, I just, how would we handle with this process of having a complete list if a particular department sees fit through its governing agency like DPW, let's say, to amend and raise the fees? How how will that be handled?
May I, Mike?
Please.
So by the charter, it's the town council's responsibility to set fees.
So that would come to.
And it has to be done through a bylaw. So that's why I'm thinking at a set timeframe. I mean, obviously, if something like electronic disposal had to go up because it went up, you can amend it at any time. But I'm just thinking this way, just like the liquor license, it gives us a set timeframe where, once every year, two years, whatever it is, we at least review them. As in the past, before the change of government, as you know, there was sometimes when, when 10 years without doing anything. And that's never good for anyone.
Pat?
Thank you, Mike. Counselor Ralph indicated that any changes in the bylaws need to be made by the town council, but I'm not sure that's true for the Health Department. There may be fees in the Health Department, fees and fines that are not subject according to state law to the council. We also noticed in the past that there are some fees on, and I'll give an example, the the fees for dumping items at the, at the transfer station were set by the board, by the DPW board originally. I'm not certain that the council has ever acted on those fees. So there, there's a bigger, there's a bigger issue here, I think, than just. I think Counselor Ralph is in a good position because he's asking for all the fees be listed. And we may, we may discover that there are more than we thought. And we may, we may discover that we need a process to review these on a regular basis.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Has everyone's questions been answered? Or are you looking for any more information from Mary? Or, Tommy, you have a question?
I do, Mike. I think going back to Ralph's request to include all fees in that process to address Pat's issue, I think it would be helpful to us to show in a column somewhere alongside the fee, who set that fee and when? And in addition to, is it a Mass. General Law? Or was it set by a previous board that at that point in time had the power to do so? And then we'll have all the information.
Pat?
I understand where that question came from. But my concern is that when we did this as part of the E-code project, it it was very, very difficult to go back and find the genesis of some of these fines and fees that have been around since forever. And we had arguments about whether they were in in a particular general law or in a, in the general statement that no finer fee can be above $300. So I would, I would hesitate to pile that additional information on top of everything else that we're asking of Mary. I think if she provides us with the numbers and we come up with certain ones that we question, then we can examine where those came from. But that might limit the list to just six or 12, rather than every, every finer fee we have, try to find its origin.
Any other questions on on this at this point? Mary, do you have anything you might want to add?
No, I'll do whatever you'd like me to do and that. But if you adopt Tom's suggestion, it will take a considerable period of time because I have no institutional knowledge and I don't know where things are recorded in this community to research them. So happy to do it, but it'll, it'll be an endeavor.
Tom?
Mike, I would amend my statement in regards to Mary's comment and Pat's reflection on the amount of work that might be involved as well. And if we have an issue with a certain one, we can certainly address it at that time if it's not known. But if it's known, they can certainly list it.
Okay, well, I imagine it could start with a conversation with the different department heads that are allocating these fees. And we'll, we'll keep it simple and we'll move forward from here and and not worry about investing numerous hours of time to look, look back at information. It's probably irrelevant. So as Ralph said earlier, this, this was a pretty light agenda and this was a good time to start a discussion on this. I, there are no motions prepared and I don't believe we need to vote on it. I think Mary has a general idea on, on what we're looking for to help us to proceed forward. So are there any other questions? Okay, hearing and seeing none. I think you all know there is no executive session this evening. I would, I would just add, it's not on our agenda, but point information that there is a document in the town hall. And if everybody can take a minute to go in and sign that, that document, that will help Jeannie out. And that being said, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I move for you to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second at 6:40 for adjournment. Our next scheduled meeting, which will be much more busy, I would say, than tonight on the 25th. There is three public hearings lined up for that night, but we'll have all the information for everybody sooner than later. Marilyn, the vote on adjournment?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
I mean, yes. Kathy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
And Don?
Yes.
We are adjourned at 6:41. Enjoy your dinner.